Evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Star Township Board of Supervisors for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. We can start, please, by all the following.
Phil Glass, Chief Police.
Jim Sullivan, Director of Engineering and Research.
Dave Chris, Director of Finance.
Jeff Woodbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Bart, Township Manager.
Alex Baumler, Township's Lieutenant.
Ted McDevitt, Supervisor.
Mr. Chris, Supervisor.
Joe Givannis, Chairman. I want to make an announcement that prior to this meeting, we met in the back room for executive sessions, talked about matters of litigation and personnel. Everybody had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from October. Any questions? Comments change?
No.
Okay. Hearing done, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Go ahead, say.
I'll say that much.
Second by Supervisor DePiero. One favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Chris, citizens to be heard online.
Mr. Chairman, there are no citizens to be heard online. Anybody here who would want to make a comment?
There's another opportunity for you to speak now or later.
I never know what I'm supposed to do.
Yeah, come on up. Just give us your name and your address.
Hi, I'm always calling. This is my sister, Robin Pleasant. I live in Pleasant. I'm sorry. I live at two-two-zero Wolfert Lane.
Okay.
And Robin lives at twenty-nine-oh-six Stony Creek Road. Yes. And we wanted to, when we were here for the last meeting, we talked about Aqua's waste water systems and our concern about the high price. During that meeting, you all said that a lot of you all worked with us, and so I wanted to know if that's still on the table. Are you still willing to work with us?
Yes, Mr. Bart. He has an update ready for you.
Absolutely. I was going to bring an update tonight.
Sure.
Um, we're here. Alex Baumler with the Kent County Law. We have been working and providing his office with all the information we have and information from other areas about some of the issues that we mentioned last time. If you recall, I said when we reviewed it, there were, the rate that was approved by the PUC is the rate we were told it was. The issue is, they just changed the rate. They changed the rate. They changed the rate structure, which has nothing to do with the PUC. We didn't get involved in that. So that's why it's completely out of whack from where we were all expecting it may be. Mr. Baumler, he can tell you, Baumler, sorry. He can explain a little further, but he's in the process of pulling all that together. He's reached out to some other interested parties in other areas to pull that information together. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, but we're working to get our hands around what we were, what was passed and approved by the PUC, what was presented to our township by Aqua and others on their behalf, and what the reality is. And we expect at some point, we may be taking legal action, but part of that is, and I know Mr. Baumler was not here, if you, Mr. Baumler, before these two ladies leave, if you could get their contact information specifically, because I think it may be helpful to keep you in the loop as well. I want to keep people in the loop during monthly meetings, but things come up in the meantime. If we could do that, I think it would be helpful to both and helpful to us.
That would be helpful to us. And we've also heard from Aqua's lawyers, yes. And so that's another reason why we wanted to know how you were progressing, because we heard from them yesterday, and we have twenty days in which to respond. And they put new matters on the table. The new matters were basically just wanting to replace, we're not lawyers, so therefore wasn't worth it properly. It's not the way things were worth it. And so. Was the petition, you have authority? Yeah, we didn't have the authority to put forward a petition against them. And just so, like I said, they gave us twenty days in which to respond. So that's why I was wondering if.
Okay. That makes it even more important that we connect tonight with our lawyers than we were. For. I had a call. The President of Aqua actually called and asked us to call with me tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm anxious to see where that goes, but I kind of know where that, our solicitor will be on the call with it, but God knows where that will go. I suspect it's going to be a broad call, but that's something we can update everyone as I know more to. But yeah, if you can coordinate with our solicitor before you leave, we will absolutely work with you. Starting tomorrow, maybe he can reach out and.
That would be wonderful.
Help God through this process as well with us.
That would be wonderful. That would be wonderful. Okay. And I wanted to ask one other question. Well, two other questions. The contract that you all put together with Aqua, is that open for public viewing?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Public viewing.
Okay. How would we go about reviewing the contract?
You just have to, if you send an email to me at OurHeart, I will, asking for it, we will send it to you.
Oh, fine. Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And.
I have a second question.
Okay. All right. If I think of anything else as the meeting progresses, when there's another chance for us to talk, would it be okay if I have a final question then?
Sure.
Thank you guys so much. You are the one we need. Thank you.
Thank you, but for staying on top of this, I'm sure the residents also would thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll add that we can also, this solicitor's a public supplier, he plays with a tariff, copy of the tariff.
Yes.
Which is from the PUC. I don't know if you have it or not, but if not, we will get it to you, because that's important of what was passed and what the actually, what is it actually being charged today. That's where the legal issues are arising. So we'll get that to you as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else to be heard? All right. Comments from the board?
No comments. No comments right now.
Okay, good. All right. We'll start with old business, then. Ordinance number five-ninety-six, amending chapter one-ninety-six, stop intersections. I'd like to call on our township solicitor, Alex Baumler, to review this ordinance, which has been duly advertised.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this first point. It has been duly advertised onetime and in newspaper of record. This is simply just an ordinance that expands seven intersections within the township. And what it does is it takes those stop, there's stop areas from two ways to all way intersections. There is a traffic study done by the township engineering firm that essentially delineated the need to take these one-two way to hallways and traffic for you. And the ordinance is a list. I'll just read them off real fast. So you have Woodlong Road, Beechwood Road, Stony Creek Road, West End, Sycamore Lane, Moorewood Lane, East End, Sycamore Lane, and Kimberly Drive as the affected areas. And it's big word consideration tonight whether to approve that and change your ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. Any questions? Comments?
No.
Okay. Hearing done, I will put forward a motion to approve ordinance number five-ninety-six, the amending chapter one-ninety-six for the stop intersections.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt. One favor?
Aye.
Oh, this motion carries.
Okay. Old Business TV, ordinance number five-ninety-seven, amending chapter one-sixty-six. I'd like to call on the township solicitor, again, Mr. Alex Baumler, for this ordinance.
Sure. So this one has more housekeeping. The members of the board and some of the young ones recall, I mean, we did a highly technical read through of a town communications ordinance maybe a year and a half ago, where we had about a twenty-seven, twenty-eight page ordinance to go with the, I will not bore you with the details like I did the last time.
I did.
But the stormwater ordinance here is housekeeping. Essentially, the rationale for amending your ordinance is that in the interim between your last passage of your stormwater regulations, the federal and the state's bodies have necessarily come up with new regulations to help you guys with your MPDS permits online. So a model ordinance that was sent out by PA DDP, and it would recommend that the municipality pass it basically by the end of this year. So what you have before you tonight, it's a twenty-seven or twenty-eight page ordinance, because that's highly technical, but it's just making the required and recommended changes for the DDP already, keep you guys in line. So it has everything from flow rate controls and calculations and best management practices and all that stuff in there. So that's what's before you tonight, is to pass it to keep you guys in line with as part of our law.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. I did read it last night because I had trouble going to sleep. You're in a burnout. So any comments? Questions? Okay. Hearing done, I'll put forward a motion to amend for ordinance five-ninety-seven, amending chapter one-sixty-six for stormwater matters. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero. One favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is bid awards for township vehicles. I'd like to call on our Chief of Police, Phil Glass.
Thank you very much. At the October twenty-fifth meeting, the Board of Supervisors, I requested and it was approved that you would be able to auction off on municipal bid two decommissioned police vehicles. The municipal bid was open on October twenty-eighth and closed on November fourteenth. I'm now requesting the sale of following vehicles to the approved highest bidders. So the 2011 Ford Crown Victoria, the highest bid was two thousand and fifty dollars. The bidder was Mordecai Markovitz, two-four, East Eleven Street, Lakewood, New Jersey. The 2013 Dodge Charger, which had one hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred forty miles, the highest bid amount was forty-three hundred dollars, and the highest bidder was Mark Leager of thirty-six oh-two Avenue J in Brooklyn. So I'm requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve the sale of these two vehicles, decommissioned police vehicles, to those two bidders.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Okay. Hearing done, Aqua's filed a motion to award the township vehicles to the bidders that the Chief announced. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt. One favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we do have a presentation tonight. Third meeting. The Finance Director, Mr. Chris, in review, the second round of the draft 2023 budget.
Thank you, Chairman Givannis. So this particular presentation is just to give you an update about where we stand in the budget process for our fiscal year 2023 budget. Just a reminder, we started working on the budget actually in September, but at our last meeting, I proposed budget, we gave authorization to advertise that, which is part of our legal requirement. Since that point in time, we've been working with department heads on the more detail on the budgets. We now have the second presentation tonight, just to bring you up to date, and we're still working towards that December thirteenth meeting to present to you a balanced budget for adoption. And just some highlights of where we stand right now. We have no tax increase plan for 2023. So this will be our thirteenth or fourteenth year in a row of no tax increase for the township, and we have no scheduled increases as well. So good news all around. Our operating budgets are currently balanced. Our capital budgets are not balanced, but that's because we've not gone through our capital improvement plan in detail yet. Once we do that, I'm confident we'll have those balanced as well in plenty of time to that December meeting. And even though we do have balanced budgets, we are continuing our discussions with department heads to see where we can reduce expenses, because even though those budgets are balanced, we still constantly strive to move those numbers down wherever we can. And currently, our budgets stand at the bottom of the screen. You can read our revenues are seventeen point four million dollars, and our expenses are eighteen point four million. And again, that all has to do with our capital budget. So on the next screen, you'll notice we've got our parks and recreation capital fund, our main capital reserve fund, our traffic impact fee fund, and our highway aid fund. Those are our four capital funds. Those are the four that are currently out of balance. And again, they're out of balance because of that capital improvement plan, where we need to go through that with department heads and supervisors in order to prioritize purchases, not just for next year, but for the four years past that as well. And some of the things that are being considered as part of the capital improvement plans, we've got ongoing stormwater remediation, continuation of our LED lighting initiatives, park improvements, technology upgrades. Throughout the township, we've got storm drainage improvements, programs along the capital improvement plan, capital, traffic control and management activities are part of that. Of course, our road improvement program, emergency management activities, new vehicles. There's a lot of requests that made up that capital improvement plan. And if you remember at our last meeting, we identified four different goals that we wanted to strive towards. There was this budget process. The first one was no tax increase, so we've got that achieved. So we've knocked that one out. We're working on minimizing the use of our savings to balance budgets. That's what we're continuing to work with our department heads, but we're in good shape with that also. And we'll continue to work on, you know, being good stewards of the township's resources. And that's where all that capital improvement plan comes into play. So the next steps, we're going to be meeting over the next few weeks again with department heads and with the Board of Supervisors, all towards having that final budget presented to you at the December thirteenth meeting for final budget adoption, and to set the tax rates for next year, which will be the same as they are for this year. So be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Chris. You know, another fabulous job. I mean, everybody knows prices are going up, costs of things are going up, and you've managed to maintain, and no tax increase is a big deal. It really is.
I would gladly take full credit for it, but to be fair, it's the work of everybody, all the department heads in the township. They've all taken that mantra to heart, that we need to do the best we can for our residents.
Okay. Thank you, David. All right. New business. Resolution number twenty-sixty-seven, start of the holiday season. I'm going to read this. It shouldn't take too long, but this is the official start of the, I'll read the proclamation here. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of Eastern Arden Township proclaiming this weekend, the weekend of December third, actually, not this coming weekend, as the official start of the holiday season in Eastern Arden Township. Whereas, the Hillcrest Plaza Merchants Association and the Board of Supervisors and staff of Eastern Arden Township have once again joined forces to plan the twenty-ninth annual Hillcrest Merchants and Eastern Arden Township Holiday Parade. And whereas, Hillcrest Plaza Shopping Center and Merchants Association have scheduled an afternoon of activities and events to kick off the arrival of Santa and the start of the holiday season. And whereas, proceeds from the activities and games at Hillcrest Plaza Shopping Center will be donated to Expressive Path. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Eastern Arden Township wholeheartedly supports this twenty-ninth annual Hillcrest Plaza Merchants and Eastern Arden Township Holiday Parade and the festivities held at the Hillcrest Plaza. Now therefore may it resolve that the Board of Supervisors of Eastern Arden Township do hereby proclaim the weekend of December third, 2022, as the official start of the holiday season in Eastern Arden Township, with the arrival of Santa Claus, and the culmination of our twenty-ninth annual Hillcrest Plaza Merchants Eastern Arden Township Holiday Parade at the Hillcrest Plaza Shopping Center and Eastern Arden Township's tree lighting event. So be it. Lot to read, but I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-eight sixty-seven. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero. One favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution number two-eight-six-eight, authorize the application for small water and sewer grant. I'd like to call on Mr. Dave Sullivan, Director of.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiero. This resolution would authorize submission of application to a finance authority for a PA small water and sewer grant. We've granted for the Pierce Road Basin, we recently rejected these, first go around for the Pierce Road Basin, because the original grant had some sufficient cover of the expenses. And we talked about perhaps, you know, applying for another grant to augment those expenses, and that's exactly what this is. Should we get this grant, we'll be much closer to the amount it was bid the first time. We may change the scope a little bit to make sure that these new grants, that the old grants will fully fund the project. And that's why Mr. Chris is smiling.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions? Comments from the board?
No.
Okay. Hearing done, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-eight-sixty-eight to authorize the application for a small water and sewer grant. Do I have a second?
I'll make that form a motion.
I.
I'm sorry. I'll second that motion. Sorry.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay. Motion carries.
Financial Security Release Number five, twenty-two oh-eight, Old Arch Road. I would like to call on our engineer, James Sonnen.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiero. For consideration this evening, is escrow release number five for twenty-two oh-eight Old Arch Road, all the items and requests have been adequately completed and satisfied since township engineer's office. Is therefore recommended that Supervisor approve escrow release number five for the project twenty-two oh-eight, twenty-two oh-eight Old Arch Road, in the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions? Comments? Okay. I will make a motion then. First of all, of course, do we have any more security releases? Number five, is this the last one?
It is not the last one.
Oh, we got more. Okay. So we can expect some more. Okay.
The balance at this time is three hundred and thirteen thousand, so there'll be at least two or three more, I would say.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Financial Security Release Number five for twenty-two oh-eight Old Arch Road, in the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero. One favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Financial Security Release Number one, ten and fourteen Germantown Bike. This is the law law. Again, I'd like to call on our Director of Engineering Services, Mr. Sullivan, to review this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for all the reading that I just did in the previous escrow release. This release is also in position to have the Board of Supervisors authorize escrow release number one for ten and fourteen Germantown Bike, also known as Walco Food Market. This is a reduction in the letter of credit that we haven't done yet, but Mr. Chris and I will figure out how to make that happen. So we've been asking to authorize a reduction in the letter of credit that was posted for this project, in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. That will be leaving remaining budget nine hundred and fifteen thousand three dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions? Comments? If not, I'll make a motion for Financial Security Release Number one, ten and fourteen Germantown Bike, the law law to be approved, in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero. One favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Transfer ownership of leaf machine. I'd like to call on our Township Manager, Mr. Pop Archer, to review this.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiero. The fourth item tonight is a request to transfer ownership of one of our very old leaf machines. We don't use these types of leaf machines anymore. We have the one-man leaf machines with our premier leaf machine operator, Brad Barry, at the back. So we have these old leaf machines that literally are operated, they're not really worth even half, but probably these old ones are, were bought with DEP grants. To decommission them is tremendously difficult to go through all the requirements. On the back end, Norristown Borough and Eastern Arden Township, we share different equipment at times and different things, and we have a great relationship on a variety of issues that we deal with, especially in public works department. They could use this in their thing. They would restore it to put a motor and do what they have to do. For our, for our concerns, it's easier for us to transfer ownership to them and let them refocus it, than it would be go to decommission it. So that's kind of a wrap right now. That's what's before you, just to transfer ownership of this machine that's been sitting there. So.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? All right. Hearing done, then I'll make a motion to transfer the ownership of the leaf machine to Norristown Borough. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt. One favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is authorize advertisements for the 2023 physical year audit service. I'd like to call on our Financial Director, Dave Chris.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. As the board is aware, the contract, the township contracts with a professional CPA firm each year to audit our financial records, and we do that in lieu of using the elected auditors. This is a common practice among larger municipalities like Eastern Arden, and we've done this for many years. Well, in order to do that, according to the township code, in order for us to be able to appoint a CPA firm, we have to first advertise the fact that we want to do so. So what we're asking tonight is permission from the board to advertise the township's intent to appoint a CPA firm at the board's January meeting. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Okay. Hearing done, then I will make a motion to authorize the advertisements for 2023 for the physical year, fiscal year, sorry, audit services. The firm would be Birdville, Birdvale Company, and to be appointed at the January meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero. One favor?
Aye.
Oh, this motion carries. All right. Mr. Chris, monthly expenditures?
Thank you, Chairman Givannis. So presenting to you tonight are the township's expenditures for the month, more specifically, the expenditures from our last board meeting to the day before this board meeting. This month, those expenditures have totaled six hundred and one thousand seven hundred, six hundred and one thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Our accounts payable expenditures, there's payments for utilities, supply services, they totaled two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and nineteen cents. And our payroll expenditures, salaries, wages, taxes, were three hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. Township staff tonight is asking for the board's approval of those expenditures, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? All right. Hearing done, I'll make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures for a total of six hundred and one thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion. Second by Supervisor McDevitt. One favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Other business? Any evidence to be added to this issue? If not, we'll move on to the manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple updates. We have, I know you're going to probably mention it in your remarks, but we have our annual tree lighting ceremony coming up on December fourth. Really want to employ everyone out. It's going to be, we try to get creative every year, we try to make it a little better, a little more, it's really an opportunity to bring our community together and how they see some relevance of what faith, bringing people together in that good moment and good feeling, good time, and family time is always a positive thing. So we, we're doing our usual procedures where we have the fire trucks bring Saman, we light the tree, and we have the snowfall, the music. This year also, we have Saman's going to be led by Mama's band, Sturman. So we have a lot of, lot of cool stuff coming. It's going to be, it's always a great night. You know, we do, we do a ton of hot chocolate and that night, but I think this year will be better than ever. So I hope everyone comes out and enjoys that. We also have, again, Mr. Chris, I told you, there's a lot of work going on for the budget coming up on the thirteenth of December. As you know, we have a lot to do as far as capital stuff and decisions that we made over the next four to five years, but much of the hard work is really done behind us now. And I would thank Mr. Chris and his staff for putting the time, because we go through every, too, too much of ours to grin. At times, it can be daunting, because we really, we really go from many places. we really, we really go from, many places go, they put a number, they go from the top down. We really go from zero-based budgeting up. So there's nothing that should be just assumed. I can tell you when we go through it, Mr. Chris and I said, now, not only do we want to tighten our budgets and to look for ways to spend less, but we absolutely want to increase, either increase or at the very least, continue the level of services that we provide. That's important because I don't want anybody to think that we're, you know, we're looking to save money and we're going to cut down on this, cut down on that. That's not an option for us, and we know that going in, and all of our department heads know that. It gives them some sort of bigger input too, knowing they're not being cut from their jobs. They're being, we want to, sometimes you have to expand it, but we really want to continue our services and create even more efficient and more expansive benefits. Lastly, if, I know the board knows, in the last two weeks, we were granted, awarded a grant from state representative Matt Bradford, payment coming from the Commonwealth. In conjunction, it's a dual grant. It was a grant for Eastern Arden and Western Arden Township. It will create, there's a track that we purchased years ago, both townships, called the Van Lanning Track. It's been sitting there for a long time. The Eastern Arden side is not the nicest side of this track, of the track of land. There's a small portion that's okay. Most of the nicer, flatter grounds in Western Arden. Representative Bradford had known, we were looking at dog parks and other things. Western Arden's looking at a bigger, a lot of other issues. So he came through with a significant grant, one of over $700,000. And there's other grants that I know for Western Arden that he is working on now. There was some miscommunication or misunderstandings on Facebook that I just wanted to take a second to clear up, that people saw pictures and saw $763,000 for a dog park. That's not the case. This much of that's for the dog park. You're going to, it's going to be nice. It's going to be keefob and all that good stuff, but that money was for street bank stabilization purposes, a meadow, much more environmental, ecological improvements in that area. The dog park was not the bulk of that money by any means. It was a small, small percentage, even though there's significant money going to it. I just want people to understand, because I saw it on Facebook and I thought, my God, if we had a $760,000 dog park, we have the biggest dog park in the world. They each have their own condo, I guess, on the deck. But this is going to be, yeah, but it's going to be, it's going to be a very nice dog park. There's a lot of work that's going to go into it. We're going to partner with some of great, some of our residents in, because it's going to be sort of friends of the dog park organization that is going to be formed. Since we've got, I haven't met with Western Arden yet, they're looking for springtime to actually go full force to get this done. So between now and then, we're going to put together a working group and get to that point. We'll have more to report in coming meetings. Lastly, I'll just comment on what I said earlier, that we, last meeting, we met in executive session, and then after we discussed reaching out to APLA and having our Solicitor's office really look into this much more deeply, some of the, this, I don't even know how to say it, some of the inconsistencies, should we say, in what was the tariff that was awarded by the PUC to APLA and what folks are exceeding on some of the bills. And that's where it's important, we, you're all, I mean, I heard from you, we're all going to help, have had the same issue. So we are actively looking at it. I know Solicitor's going to reach out to these two ladies before they leave, but we will have more updates to come with that. And it's something that's very important that, you know, this has to be right, or, you know, if you commit to something, you commit to something, and it's got to be the way it is. So stay tuned for more information on that and hear more from the Solicitor in coming meetings. That's it.
All right. Thank you. That's pretty good. Three minutes. You sounded a lot of things. Appreciate that for sure. All right. Any citizens to be heard? Yes, sir. Come on up. Thank you, David Anderson. Anybody want to?
Real quick. Ladies and gentlemen, Chris, just want to compliment our public works. It seems like leaves fall gradually over the years, and you're able to keep up with it. This year has been crazy. Everything happens overnight, and they just take good care of us. I thank them very much.
Well, thank you for those comments. And we certainly appreciate it. And Tim back there, yeah, he's mentioned some of these truck operators, single-handedly sucks up tons of leaves every week because they're falling faster than they can pick them up. But we do appreciate that, and we appreciate public works too. They do a great job. Okay. Anyone else? No. Lost twice. Okay. Review of upcoming meeting meetings. We have Thursday, November 28th, the historical advisory commission meeting at 6:30. December 6th, zoning hearing board meeting at 7:00 PM. December 13th is our next board supervisor meeting. I won't go through all the upcoming events because Mr. Norton gave us the highlights there, although we are closed the Friday into Thanksgiving for the office here. And tree lighting, just to clarify, it's, it used to be the night before the parade. Now it's Sunday night after the parade, which is Saturday morning. So Saturday morning parade is on the 3rd, the tree lighting is on December 4th at 6:00 to 7:30. And there are other events too going on that you have to respond to. So go on the website, look at the under Parks and Records, a lot of offers. Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll make a motion to return. Do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Perry. Motion carries. May you turn. Thank you.